Be ready. Okay. Good morning, everyone. It's eight thirty. Welcome to the Board of County Commissioners's regular meeting, December tenth, twenty twenty four. If you stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States. And we will be standing one day at a time. And with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome, everybody. We have one addition to our agenda. The sheriff has one person they'd like to recognize that helped in the apprehension and recognition of a emergency-type situation. So Sheriff, we'll turn it over to you.
As we begin to turn this on. So now it's being able to stand. And yeah, but we've wanted to bring you down to the Commissioners' meeting here and publicly recognize you for the assistance you provided law enforcement in apprehending a kidnapping suspect.
Well, thank you very much again.
So what we have here is a sheriff's accommodation.
Oh, my goodness. Thank you.
And it reads, on November, can everybody hear me? On November thirtieth, twenty twenty four, Delta County nine-one-one Communication Center aired an attempt to locate a kidnapping suspect driving towards Delta in a twenty twenty-two Toyota four. Delta County deputies observed the vehicle driving south on Highway fifty and G fifty at speeds exceeding a hundred and twenty miles an hour. Delta County deputies, Delta Police Department, and Colorado State Patrol attempted to stop the vehicle. The vehicle continued to elude law enforcement at a high rate of speed, ending up on the traffic hub road where it became stuck in the mud while crossing the Dooby Dirt. The suspect left the vehicle and fled on foot. Law enforcement set up a perimeter and requested dispatch send out an alert notification to all residents in the immediate area. Ted Waitman, who is a pilot that flies out of Lake Lakefield, in Delta received the notification and offered his assistance by utilizing his aircraft to attempt to locate the suspect. Mr. Waltman and Waitman, sorry. And Colorado State Patrol trooper were able to locate the suspect from there while directing law enforcement to his location. Ultimately, the suspect was arrested and transported to Delta County Jail, where he's been booked in for kidnapping and a multitude of additional charges. Mr. Walt, Mr. Waitman's.
It is Waltman.
Is it Waltman?
It is Waltman.
Waltman's situational awareness and quick thinking played a critical role in the apprehension of this criminal who put so many lives at risk that day. Thank you very much for your support. Or Pat John there.
If you show that when you get pulled over, you get a. Thank you so much. Let's get a picture real quick.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
We're here. One, two.
Thank you very much. No, it's a very interesting day. I was standing at the airport, just happened to be there at the right time, and a trooper came by with his lights on, which is, of course, very unusual, and said, hey, we got the suspect. Could you assist us? I said, well, sure, you know, I'll give you a ride. So we quickly got in the plane and he had his walkie-talkie. And there was officers everywhere except where the suspect was because they couldn't get close enough to him because of the terrain out there. I'll tell you what, that guy could run. I was actually impressed. He was going up and down those royals like you wouldn't believe. But at any rate, we spent about forty minutes circling around and vectoring in all the various officers who ultimately were only able to get the guy because they had an ATV that enabled them to get much closer, of course. So it was an interesting experience for sure. But I'm, I'll talk to you, you know, later, I'll give you my card. I'm happy to help for free. Anytime there's a situation like that, that because I've got, you know, there's Ferraris and there's Jeeps. Well, I've got a Jeep airplane, so I can go pretty much anywhere. Anyway, happy to help.
Thank you. Thanks again, sir. Thank you. And with that one addition, the agenda will be approved. Now is time for constituent time. We have quite a group here in the meeting room, and after everybody in the meeting room addresses, then we'll go to the computer. Since there is such a large crowd, it asks that you keep your comments around three minutes and so that everybody can have their say on whatever topic they are addressing. So has everybody signed up? You got one person that didn't? Okay. Who's the first one on the list, Robbie?
Melanie.
You have visuals, you can go first.
If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Melanie Hoshiko. I live at three-three-one-zero-one J Road in Hodgkins. That's Rogers Mesa. So I'm here just to really request that we get a hearing of this stated event venue. My husband and I, we were one of only about three families that were notified about this venue. When we opened the document up, we were shocked to the size and the scope of it. I just want to get down to the facts. First of all, they probably picked the worst place on the whole property to put a parking lot in, a hundred-and-two-car gravel parking lot. And I'm not speaking just from a neighborly kindness standpoint of them putting that parking lot on the other side of my mailbox, on the other side of my garden, and practically underneath my bedroom window. But I'm just talking about from, that's a natural water drainage. Ron Smith, he's a farmer, he's going to talk about that, but that land's not flat. It's not flat at all. There's going to be a tremendous amount of damage caused to the actual road there if that parking lot goes in. For this reason, I feel that permit should be denied. Also, with the parking lot being so close to my property line, it's one hundred percent guaranteed that it's going to exceed the sound decibels. Just one car driving on a gravel driveway produces between seventy-five and eighty-five decibels. Multiply that by fifty. For this reason, the permit should be denied. What about the headlights of fifty to one hundred cars? They will be pointing directly into my bedroom window when driving into the parking lot. This is the definition of a nuisance. For this reason, the permit should be denied. We don't feel comfortable with the process of, if there are violations, we submit a written notice, and then there's thirty days for the law code enforcement to respond. That's too long of a time. Let's get to the land use. Chapter four, section B of the Land Use Code states, "To the extent reasonably feasible, proposed development shall be designed to avoid impacts to prime agricultural soils on the subject property." Kenny and Patty Davis are proposing to destroy roughly forty percent of the current property's prime irrigated hay and livestock grazing fields. For this reason, the permit should be denied. The master plan overall vision states, "The county will foster a culture that upholds the values of our community quality of life and respectful neighborhood communication." I do have a visual here. With a map of our end of Rogers Mesa. This rectangle here represents the venue, proposed venue space, land. If you'll notice, all of the red dots, those are some of the neighbors that have written in and oppose this. This is probably about ninety-five percent of the neighbors around this venue. They feel that this does not fit in to the culture of our community. And then lastly, this short, this is CJ.
Just let's let, you don't need to show that to the audience.
His mom is single mom, a mother of three. They can see the Davis house from their driveway. This is what his mom Amanda has to say. "My son has a clinical diagnosis of level-three autism, including sound frequency and high sense impulse. This indicates not only can he hear a pinfall on the floor, he can feel the vibrations of the sound as well. This is why it's so important for the extra traffic and noise to not be needlessly brought to where we live. Currently, it's extensively more quiet here, which supports my family, my son's sanity, and his ability to stay regulated in a more socially appropriate manner. He needs a good night's rest, and when he doesn't sleep, the rest of us don't sleep. Sleep difficulties faced by children with autism can produce significant decrease in the quality of life for all of the family members. Asleep is a behavioral and emotional regulator. Sleep fragmentation or deprivation often worsens behavioral disturbances in children with autism. For CJ and for CJ's family, this permit should be denied. Thank you."
If I may say, if you're all talking about the wedding venue, that's fine. You can still have constituent time to address the BOCC. We cannot comment on the wedding venue. It has to go to the Planning Commission first and then to the BOCC.
Chairman Mr. Paulup and the speaker, if there's visuals, you probably need copies of those. Again, this is constituent time. This is not a hearing on whatever matter is being discussed. And Sean, this all needs to become part of the of the record for that application. So ma'am, if you have visuals and that sort of thing, it would be best if, well, if you can maybe give them to Mr. Gardner in the back.
Yeah, would you prefer to have the actual ones or would you like me to just send him a PDF?
You'd have to ask him that.
Thank you.
But just for your information, the BOC can't comment on it because it's a planning commission process that it has to go through first before it comes before the board. Next up, Henry Hoschiko. Again, if you could state your name and address for us, please, sir.
My name is Henry Hoschiko. I live at three-three-two-zero-seven J eighty Road, Hodgkins. I'd like to address some of the parent violations of the land use code. The roads that are leading up to this venue are not adequate to handle the surge in traffic that is expected during the events. There are ninety-degree turns just before and just after the venue. And these are not lit. There are no lighting, and at night, and also with possible people that are under the influence, they may have accidents at these corners. And the, there have been accidents in the past at these corners and also other corners that are in the traffic zone that the people that will be attending will encounter. The the J eighty road connects to, well, the J road, which this property is connected connected to is a road that connects to J eighty road, which is the road that I live on. At that point, the traffic has to go left to right. And going right, it goes down a very steep hill. And the road is narrow. And if the road is icy and at night, it'd be very easy for cars to go off that road into the valley below. And during the winter, it'd be even worse. And if you're intoxicated, it would be quite likely that you'd be going off that road. And then going left at that intersection, there's another ninety-degree turn, which could very well have had accidents on it also in the past. Traffic could very well have an accident there. So I recommend that a complete, before a complete review of this venue, that a traffic impact study be completed on it before a decision is made. And Melanie already talked about the noise problem that could occur. And so I from a land use violation, I don't feel that this property meets those requirements. And I do not recommend approving the permit for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Gail Simonton, you have a question mark if you'd like to speak?
I will donate my time to somebody else.
Okay. Last, Christensen.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Russ Christensen, thirty-three-one-zero-one J Road, Melanie's husband, actually. Provided the visuals, you can tell she used to be in the education in the Delta County School District. The my concerns here, I think, are appropriate for the Board of County Commissioners because I'm worried about you're going to hear a lot about the codes in the Planning Commission, but land use code, I know, has been a hot topic and and generally, you're seeing a roomful of a lot of proponents of the adoption of land use code, ninety-five percent of which are greatly surprised that a limited-use permit would allow this on this type of property in predominantly almost one-hundred percent eight-twenty agricultural zoning. That being said, effective land use code, we understand this is in development. The whole department's in, you know, in development, something the county's working towards that I see a value in. But land use code is, has to be contextualized. And the maturity of the land use code at this point is leaving some strong chance for public and private nuisance to develop from if this were adopted here. One of those major issues is the alcohol type of model of this business. An event permit on this property is a bring-your-own-alcohol model. So there is no enforcement. Many counties have adopted that these types of venues require a tips authorized server to be hired and serve the alcohol on the premises. This prevents underage consumption, and it also prevents over-serving people. National Institute of Health has two studies that there's two contributing factors to overconsumption of alcohol. Open bar and a celebration. They're calling this a wedding venue. It might be an anniversary venue. It might be that. So you get no bartenders, people bring their own alcohol, celebrate with no, you know, hey, police yourself, we're creating a public safety issue and a public nuisance. I mean, alcohol is number-one contributing factor to public conflict. We are not in a zone that love our sheriff's department, but we are actually not served by Hodgkins on Rogers Mesa, so we have a long response time. So both public-private nuisance issues related to the alcohol type of license here. We're finding lots of loopholes that make this particularly concerning to us on that. The other would be when this was replanted, from what Wes had originally had in his agreement, was for no development. That clause was removed. I don't know if this permit was considered at that time as a reason behind that because it has not been approved yet. I'm not sure on that matter. But I believe that the, one of the Commissioners had to authorize that replat to remove that amendment of no development on that property. I think that concerns a lot of property owners that don't want to see legacy properties. Wes would be extremely sad that this is what the plans are for that heritage farm in our valley. But that being said, in going forward with these types of uses, they're kind of masquerading under the agritourism law here, and there is no agritourism law. This county does not have a definition of a bona fide farm. So a bona fide farm operation should be a requirement to go to the water, to Rogers Mesa Domestic Water, to you, to a planning board, and say, we're an agritourism operation. This was a functioning property. There's essentially been cut in half. Agriculture has been removed. There's nothing in the business plan that has anything about participation in any type of agricultural activity events. You can go to many state and many county descriptions of what agritourism is, and those are all requirements, and we have none. Agritourism is basically a term we can throw around or we can, you know, put it out there that, hey, this is going to be a barn. Well, this is a barn in nomenclature only. It will be a, they can come and build something that looks like a barn, and it, you know, it's going to you know, have drywall inside it, and I doubt if any cows or horses are going to be in there, you know, anytime soon. So it's essentially a barn dominium for a commercial development, for a commercial event venue masquerading under in the community under agritourism for support. And that concerns all of us. So those are, those are my specific concerns. I understand my time is limited. I have written a pretty extensive letter on some of the legal, the legal matters, but more just the let's, as a county and community, develop, you know, contextualization between our our ordinances and laws and these types of property permits that could allow this to happen. Currently, there is no reasonable expectation to think this will not cause private and public nuisance. And until those other contextualizing ordinances, enforcements can be opposed, can be developed, this should outright be opposed. The, and that's why I think it's appropriate to have before the Board of County Commissioners to have this contextualized information. Like I said, I'm a proponent of county commissioners, I'm a proponent of the planning board and of land use code. My concern is bigger than what my wife is saying about, this is about the future of the valley. And it's also about the, the number-one thing in land use code is not in my backyard, right? And if I take this story, you have thirty response, over thirty-eight response letters, all within a half mile, only three people were notified. It hasn't reached the broader community yet. We haven't done any public relations to bring, you know, pitchforks and torches into this meeting because we think you've endured enough of that. But it will be an odd coalition that will develop between the people that showed up with, I'll do what I want with my land. I want no land use codes. And the people that are sitting in this room, who are, we like the idea of some land use code adoption to preserve property values, to preserve our rights, and and to develop as a community within here. Well, that community, that coalition's about to quickly develop between, you know, the land anarchists and the people that want to successful them because they're all going to say, not in my backyard. And as a courtesy, that's not some political movement that I necessarily want to start in the valley. Reach out, reaching out to everybody, each, every one of you. I understand your interaction is limited to address those concerns with you. I, you know, company I work for employs lots of people in this area, including one of our neighbor's sons. Hired him, we are a community. And I do, I do business with the, with the, with the county, with pretty much every county, San Miguel County. So I have a reason to cooperate, but that's also of my nature, is to promote leadership. I also want to take just a second to commend you on the the trails that's being done through Hodgkins. I think that was a difficult thing to get going, and I want to say thank you for bringing that, all the community together and all the different requirements. It's a lot of work in the playground as well. Is definitely should, you know, put a little lapel pin on that when that gets done at the fairground. And everybody gets to use it, including my autistic nephew. So thank you for your work. Thank you for your time. I would like, you know, to stay involved in this process as much as I could. I think a lot of us would to help shape a a land use code. But at this time, my strongest recommendation is that this go to a public hearing. I don't think a land, limited-use permit was appropriate. There were not conditions put on it. It more suitably fits a conditional use permit, which would then empower the Planning Commission to place restrictions on it. It moved forward under a model of three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year, over a hundred events, two-hundred-plus people. And that scope and scale is not appropriate. There's nothing limited about that unless you include leap year, and they wanted to go to three sixty-six days a year.
Wrap up.
Yes, I'm wrapped. Thank you.
Thank you.
I always need that reminder, Commissioner Lane. I'm one of those guys. So no, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up is Diane Hoschiko. You said no. Okay. Lori Faulkner.
Good morning. My name is Lori Faulkner. I live at thirty-three-zero-five-nine J Road. And we also own the plat, land at thirty-three-zero-six-three J Road, which is just adjacent to this four heritage property. Our family has known Wes and Carol. Carol passed away, but Wes, we knew very well, celebrated in our home with our kids. They grew pumpkins, had an extensive garden, gave our kids pumpkins every year. And their plat was changed to allow for this development after Wes made it abundantly clear on paper that his property, if sold, was not to be anything other than agricultural. I am speaking today on behalf of my family, our neighbors, and the broader Delta community. I am here to strongly oppose the proposed event venue at thirty-three-zero-eight-four J Road due to its numerous adverse effects on our community environment and agricultural values in our valley. The land use code is one of my husband, Dennis Faulkner, and my concerns, which Russ already touched base on. I won't, I'll just delete that from, from my papers here that I've prepared, arguing about the land use code. And this proposal seeks to transform a property zone to agricultural twenty acres, eight-twenty, into a year-round commercial event venue accommodating over a hundred vehicles per event. While the applicants may argue this project will bring benefits to the area, the reality is that it will disrupt safety, peace, and the rural character of our community. I respectfully urge you to deny this application based on the following details. The original owner of this property never intended for it to become a commercial venue. The original owner of this property never intended for it to become a commercial venue, as I said, and that, this is not a minor adjustment, what happened to the plat. It represents a fundamental shift that disregards the original owner's wishes, it is vital that we respect the intentions of landowners, as they reflect the values that make Delta County a desirable place to work and to live. My kids ran cattle for years and with Ron Smith, who is here, could the cattle run from several roads down around our bend and onto his land, and it's been a wonderful experience for my children. My daughter was the Delta County rodeo queen in twenty eighteen and nineteen. My kids have learned how to be good stewards of the land, and that, that's what we're asking for, is for this to be considered so that there can continue to be that stewardship. The Rogers Mesa Domestic Water Company explicitly prohibits the use of domestic water taps for purely commercial purposes, as stated in its policy adopted in November of twenty twenty-three. The use of a domestic tap for purely commercial purposes is in violation of our contract and our bylaws, and is grounds for revocation of the offending membership. While the policy allows additional uses tied to agritourism, this venue fails to meet the criteria. The property does not produce agricultural goods or livestock, the owner has stated that he wants nothing to do with agriculture, and is relying, according to Diane Firewore at the water company, that they're relying primarily on the backdrop of the beautiful scenery that we have in our valley. The venue relies on the rural ambiance provided by neighbors, which the policy specifically prohibits. So approving this venue would undermine the contractual obligations and risk overburdening a limited water system. There's precedents set in many counties across the United States, one being Santa Clara County, California, it shows similar projects that required formal traffic impact studies to assess and mitigate risks. The denial of the Black Barn venue in Montrose County, also proposed by the Davises, was highlighted with traffic concerns and all of the exact same reasons that we have, and it was denied in Montrose County. So our, our infrastructure and road safety adequacy needs to come over these commercial interests. The misclassification is of agritourism, as Russ stated, we, we can argue, but there are many environmental concerns, the venue's operation will have a negative impact on our environment, the gravel lot, which has been mentioned, the light, the noise, the harm that it will do to our local wildlife and disturb our natural habitats. The waste generated from frequent event risks contaminating surrounding land and waterways. The disruption caused by year-round events will have lasting consequences for the area's ecosystems, and we ask that Delta County will consider the environmental costs before approving this proposal, if it does come before the board. In twenty twenty-two, there are many, many things, but the venue for the Black Barn venue that the Davises proposed with their family, was denied due to the concerns over traffic, noise, and compatibility and the rural zoning. So the rural zoning is an issue. The alcohol consumption and legal concerns, the proposal allows guests to bring their own alcohol, which, which was already touched on, and the National Institute of Health has extensively listed the reasons why we don't want to have this. Colorado law requires strict oversight for alcohol service at public events, there's the open container law on our highways, I don't know exactly how that's impacted when people come in with an SUV and have a hatchback compared to a trunk, but that, that is certainly a liability. My closing, my, in my closing here, I would ask that this proposal is denied, if it comes before you. It is not just about one property, it is about preserving the value, safety, and identity of Delta County, and it would have negative impacts on our livestock. It's proven fact that if there is noise, lights, those do impact the reproductive, reproduction of our, the ability of our livestock, and so that's something that needs to be greatly considered. Ron Smith has a large number of cattle, and I'm afraid that it would have a huge impact, not only on the cattle, but on the Hoshiko's nephew, as he's severely autistic, and it would disrupt our rural life with increased traffic, noise, and environmental harm. The concerns raised are supported by precedents within our county homeowners and our valley. I have prepared like Russ, much more, but I, I think we've touched on it, and we appreciate the time today to bring our concerns before you on behalf of the Rogers Mesa. Homeowners, I urge you to deny the application to let us protect the legacy of this land, the safety of our roads, and the peace of our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sean, I guess all those doubts, does it make sense to give an email address or something where people can send information? I mean, I know that's already out there, but another commenter also just said she has more information, I don't know if that's already been submitted or not.
In my, in my conversation, it's already been addressed by the Hoshikos.
Okay.
Yeah, that, okay, I just didn't want to be redundant and take more time. Thank you.
So where would people send comments, Sean? Where would people send comments if they haven't done that already?
Thank you. Dennis Falker, you said no. Christine Chase, she said no. So Ron Smith, you said yes.
Ron Smith, I live at three-two-nine-eight-eight J A Road, I joined this property on the north. This is the thing that the planning commission sent to me, the proposal. I joined the property all the way along here. Okay. I'm going to be a little more practical than everybody else that spoke, because I think they've covered everything on that side of it. Right here, from this northwest corner, this is the parking lot. From this northwest corner, across here to the southeast, is a natural drainage that is basically a draw that goes across that. Keep that in mind, that's a natural drainage that goes through there. There's several problems with this project. This parking lot is a natural drainage that runs from the northwest to the southeast, and by putting that in, it would block it and that would create several problems. During the summer, wastewater runs off through here during your irrigation system. Okay? And by blocking that, what would they do with the natural wastewater, or the wastewater that leaves, leaves my property and goes through there? Also, this is a natural flood control, what would happen if we had a large rain event, snow event, or something like that? What would happen with, by blocking this with the flood control on that? Another problem that happens here is on the north side, right along here, there is a problem with the county. In the summer, that borrowed ditch fills up with water. The culvert that goes under the road here on this ninety is either collapsed or plugged up or whatever, it does not drain. So the county's always got, there's water backed up right here, most of the summer. Okay. One other problem that it says on here, or that they were proposing, they were saying that there's going to be a pond on the property. Colorado water law is limiting building new ponds. I don't know if they've checked into that or not, no, and I am not aware of any existing pond here that they can expand. Another problem that is prevalent with this property here, in the ten years that I've owned this, there has been four accidents on this ninety that has taken out my fence in the winter and in the summer, just on this ninety alone here. Part of the time, they fixed it, part of the time I had to. This last summer, in July or August, somebody came from this direction and hit a gate post right here. The county has a sign post right here, they took a mirror off of an older truck, the sign posted, it hit a gate post over here, whoever it was, backed up and left. It happened between two o'clock, when my grandson was out there in the field working, and four o'clock when Russ came home, we don't have any idea who it was. Problem with these ninety degrees here. I had a problem prior to that on the other ninety over here on this side, where somebody took the fence out over there. This is all within ten years, four separate accidents. Another problem, I'm not sure, I haven't measured this out, they're showing the driveway coming out right here. I have a gate and a entrance into my property here. I'm saying that somebody, the county is going to have to put a barricade on the north side of the road with arrows pointing either way, because if they don't, people are going to come right out of this driveway, right through my fence. This driveway cannot come out where my existing gate is, because if it does, they're going to go through it, that barricade can't be in front of my gate, that's going to be another problem. And probably one of the more important things that's going to have to be brought up, I'm in it on past, Delta County is right to farm county. I will have livestock in my fields. This venue, I don't know if they will have dogs there or not. If they have dogs there, and if they should get on my property and harass my animals, I will state it right now, I will not be responsible for what happens to those dogs if they are harassing my animals, if they are killing my calves, or if they are doing something like that. I have a right, under Colorado law, to protect my livestock. So if this venue goes through, I want that to be a factor that is put in the approval. And I think the traffic is going to be a major problem on this. These ninety degrees are going to cause problem. That's pretty much everything I have to say.
Thank you, and thank you for making us aware of the Culver Road, you may check in on that, thank you. Melanie Ruble?
I'm Melinda Ruble, and I live on thirty-two-nine-thirty-two J Road, so I'm, would be south of the proposed venue. Most of what I was going to talk about has already been discussed, and so I'll just tell you how I feel about, this road is, is already really busy, there's several businesses. Bollinger and Queen has a lot of business, people pulling trailers with pipe, there is a lot of farm equipment that goes up and down this road, especially in the summertime. There are school buses, and you can go on that road basically any time of the day and you will see people walking. It's used very much for, there's children in this area that people ride their horses, there's buggies, there, this road is already really busy, and there's a cemetery that's towards the bottom of the, the hill, if the traffic was to be coming up that way, the, the ninety-degree corners have already been discussed, which they are a problem in the winter and in the summer, there's a lot of livestock in the area, there's a lot of deer and turkeys, and they're always on the road, it's, you have to drive slow and careful, and people that don't know the area coming in, you know, he's proposing to have, his goal is to have at least a hundred events a year, which that averages out to almost every four days, he wants to have an event there, that's a tremendous amount of traffic coming into our area and disrupting the quiet, and with having a, a wedding, normally there's music, and that again is a, is a noise problem that we have to, we're going to have to deal with. I thank you for listening to us, and I feel like everybody's been respectful. I thank you for listening to us and I feel like everybody's been respectful. And we just asked that you would really consider disallowing this for our community that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. And you did bring it, Melinda, and I called you Melanie.
Oh, that's okay.
Valerie Stucker?
My name is Valerie Stucker. My address is three three one eight eight J Road in Hotchkiss. I'm a little bit of north of the proposed venue. I just wanted to reiterate a couple of things that have been talked about already. When we received the proposal in the mail, it was kind of a surprise. These are new neighbors that have purchased this property. They have not gone around. We don't know them. I've never met them. They're from out of the area. And I don't feel like, after reading the proposal, they have done due diligence in researching their proposed business. From a business standpoint, there have already been three new wedding barn event facilities built in the last year in Delta County. And I don't know what the cap would be for a small county, but it seems like we're probably approaching it. So for the land used to be changed from this very pristine, beautiful alfalfa field that it's been to be changed and then not have a successful business there because they haven't researched. And I'd like to show you Melanie's picture again. I could see where at age twenty could maybe be a multi-use like this could be approved in certain situations. This property isn't laid out. The housing is just too dense. People's homes are just too close. If if homes were at one end and an event venue was at a other end of a twenty acres, maybe. But people's homes are just too close to the parking lot and to the venue. This is less than fifty yards from the Christiansen's home. From a business standpoint, I wouldn't want to be paying to have a wedding and hear Russ over there yelling, hey, honey, have you seen my, or hearing Mr. Smith's cows mooing. The Fauleners have a dog kennel that we can hear on the other side of the venue. We can hear the dogs barking. And this many cars coming and going is going to be great sport for the dog kennel. They're going to have a great time barking all weekend at the cars coming and going. And I don't know that that's going to be a successful plan for a location for a wedding venue. I just don't see that it would work. So before the land use is changed, I think all those considerations should be made. So I would recommend a denial.
Thank you. Ryan Stucker?
Good morning.
Morning.
How are you guys? So my name's Ryan Stucker, three three one eight eight J Road, Hotchkiss on Rogers Mesa. I'm a pioneer family of the valley. My great grandfather is homestead, one of the early homesteaders up in North Fork. So I feel I have a stake in things here. We moved to this property. We bought it in oh six and I wanted to have my family there. It's quiet. I just wanted to live that quiet farm life. And, you know, I plan on staying there and retiring at this property. This wedding venue I'm really against. It's less than a hundred yards where the proposed barn is going to be built from my property. The noise, you know, if you put yourself in our shoes, I don't think you would want to live near a wedding venue hearing music all the time. It's in the traffic. Traffic's already bad enough with Bollinger and Queen down the road from us. This will be adding to the traffic and it's it's just too much. This used to be a quiet area. And if this goes in, it's no longer going to be quiet. I'm also concerned about that, the noise. They could put restrictions on the noise or the alcohol or whatever, but you guys know as well as I do that that's hard to enforce. And I'm concerned about drunk driving. I've got kids and everybody's active up there, out on the roadways, doing things. So I just ask that you really consider the few homeowners around that, that that venue that, you know, put yourself in our shoes is, I guess, what I'm trying to say. I just, I hate seeing farmland go away. And once this happens, it will be gone forever. It'll never turn back to farmland. Rogers Mesa is always been mostly farmland. I know times are changing and people are coming into our valley. And they're subdividing and selling it all off. And we need to try to preserve this farmland or this is not going to be the same place that I grew up. And so I just ask that you consider these things. Another concern for me is because of the noise that is going to come with this, it's going to decrease our property values. So if I wanted to sell and get out of there, I'm not going to make what I could have made. So there's that. And then the, my last thing, in the paperwork that we received, I noticed, and I don't know if it was deliberate or not, but they stated they were rebuilding a barn. Well, that is not true. There's never been a barn there in that field. So this rebuilding of a barn is either malicious, they're they're trying to sneak around the system to try to be able to build this barn. Or maybe it was just accidental. I don't know. But it seems kind of suspicious to me, the wording that they used. So there was never a barn there, just so you know. There is no rebuild. This would be a new build. Okay, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Campbell, you said yes? I couldn't read your first name.
Thank you and good morning.
Morning.
Seems like I'm about to beat a dead horse here. But maybe not. I'm going to read a little bit about
Name an address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Peter Campbell, three two nine eight five J Road, Hotchkiss. I'm going to read a couple of things out of the land use code. Protect the character of existing rural communities and neighborhoods. And the right to develop improved property does not include the right to adversely impact neighboring properties. Well, it seems as though special use ought to enhance the qualities of a neighborhood. And I'm all for property rights, but parking, noise, traffic, alcohol have already been brought up. And all of those things are in adverse impact. And that's pretty much all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Grant Hartman, you have a question mark?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Grant Hartman, three three one three zero J eighty Road. I'm one of the red dots on that map over there of many who are sort of against this right now. And I could sit here and repeat everything that everybody's already said. But I'm not going to waste your time with that. Just want to voice my disapproval with this and that's it.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody on the computer, Lindsay?
No, sorry.
Okay. Thank you very much for your your time and your comments. Like you say, it'll go through the planning commission procedure and we're the governing body of that. Thank you very much for your time.
Can we take a comfort break?
We'll take a five minute break and then we'll come back and go ahead with the agenda that has been posted. Welcome back, everybody. We'll continue with the agenda. Now we have County Commissioner Terry Stevenson.
Good morning, Commissioners and Robbie. I have the minutes for the November nineteenth, twenty twenty-four Board of County Commissioners's regular meeting. Are there any additions, deletions, or additions?
I have none.
Not here, not here.
I also have the minutes for the November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four Board of County Commissioners's special meeting. Are there any additions, changes, or deletions?
I have one, Miss Terry, on line twenty-two. I wasn't there, but if there were no constituents, could we add the word none?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I also have today your consideration of the local license renewal for business marketing, marketing and advertising incorporated due business against River Pleasure Park for a hotel and restaurant license, a fermented malt beverage on and off premises, and a change in management. This is all located at eighty-nine forty-nine Pleasure Park Road in Hotchkiss. I did talk to Sheriff Taylor and he has not had any issues with the hotel and restaurant license for the fermented malt beverage on and off. We also did in the Pats do a change in management, but at that time it was only at the time that they did the takeout and delivery. So to make sure that it is clear that management is going from Caroline Jagodinsky to Alan DeGrange. He has submitted another change in management application.
Can we do this one motion? Do you need?
Absolutely.
Okay. I'm going to move the board approve the license renewable for business marketing and advertising, doing businesses against River Pleasure Park and for hotel and restaurant license for malted malt, fermented malt beverage, and approve the change in management from Caroline Jagodinsky to Alan DeGrange.
I'll second the motion.
Motion and second on the floor. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, so done. Thank you. Next up, Commissioner Business, Board's Consideration of Resolution of the Board of County, Delta County Commissioners concerning the adoption of the twenty twenty-five budget for the County of Delta, State of Colorado.
Commissioners, before you and with the the leadership of Leona Anderson, Finance Director for Delta County, you have before you the resolution adopting the twenty twenty-five budget. You have in front of you the general fund total, twenty-one million, eight hundred and ninety-seven thousand, nine hundred and eleven in expenditures, road and bridge fund total, eight million, three hundred and eighty-one thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two. You have the respective smaller departments there listed as well for a total expenditure budget of fifty-six million, four hundred and ninety-six thousand, four hundred and thirty-one. In the subsequent pages, then, you see, based on the fund, the actual amount from each of the reserved funds as well as the revenue to indicate the balance for each of the funds, starting with general and ending with the Safety Improvement Fund for total projected revenues of fifty-six million, four hundred and ninety-six thousand, four hundred and thirty-one. This has been duly noticed on our website and in hard copy since August when we started the twenty twenty-five budget process. I want to particularly thank not only Leona, but Susan and all of HR, as well as each of the department heads for their diligence and attention to detail for proposing the Delta County budget. Can I answer any questions for you at this time?
I don't really have any questions. I I first of all, I want to thank Robbie, Leona, and everybody for all their effort here. It's it's been a, it's been a long haul to get here. I know the commissioners have made a lot of changes and adjustments here and just appreciate you guys working with us to to get this where we we feel comfortable with it. I've been, I've been looking back at budgets as I was cleaning out my office here and noticing the the increase since my time first here on the board. And I'm like, how how did this grow so much? But then I I dig, start digging in deep and, you know, there's a lot of things in this budget that weren't in just a few years ago. Our public safety sales tax has increased that budget. The amount of money spent in human services has drastically increased in the last several years. An incredible increase in human services. We've seen an increase at the landfill. Part of this because of expansion, part of this just because landfill is getting used more. The revenues are higher at the landfill. There's more more trash going in the landfill than ever before. You you look at our road and bridge fund, it's it's almost stayed steady for quite a while now. So I I just you know, just wanted to have have everybody when they're when they're lighting their hair on fire because Delta County budget's so high. You know, look at where it's actually increased. You know, the other big part of that increase is is thanks to Matt Jennings, our grant administrator. He has brought an incredible amount of money into this county and got a lot of projects done. So there's, there absolutely is an increase, you know, considering where we were five, six years ago. It is higher. But I I still, I'm proud of this county. I I still think we behave very fiscally responsible. And and I'm I'm proud of this budget. So that's that's all I have to say.
And I'll echo that, Don. You have spent countless hours on capital projects, doing the very best you can to minimize costs and complete these projects on time and under budget. And our department heads have been very conscientious about what they're doing. So, Leoni, thank you. Robbie, thank you.
I'm sorry, but on a page seven, I do have a correction. It should be adopted this tenth grade this
Yes, thanks to all the department heads. It's nice that everybody kind of gets along, you know, from the sheriff to the administrator Robbie to the road and bridge to the landfill. With the amount of employees that Delta County has, sure, there's going to be a little bit of drama, but for the most part, we all get along. We can discuss topics and agree and or disagree. But thank you very much for all the hard work that's gone into this and it's been a long haul, but no, and every year it it's a work that has to be done and people require more services from road and bridge to human services to the landfill. All those programs are needed. The money is spent wisely, I think, and proud to be a member of the Board of County Commissioners. So this will be Resolution number twenty-seven.
Well, I'll move that the board adopt Resolution twenty twenty-four dash R dash twenty-seven. A resolution of the Board of Delta County Consider, Delta County Commissioners concerning the adoption of the twenty twenty-five budget for the County of Delta, State of Colorado. I'll second.
Motion and second on the floor. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, so done. Thank you.
Okay, the next then is the consideration of resolution to appropriate the sums of money to the various departments and funds of County of Delta, State of Colorado.
This will be Resolution number twenty-eight.
I'll move the board approve Resolution number twenty twenty-four R zero two eight of the Board of County Commissioners concerning the appropriation of sums of money to the various departments and funds of the County of Delta, State of Colorado for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five.
I'll second.
Motion and second on the floor. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, so done. Thank you.
Normally, we would have the mill levy resolution at the same time. We are waiting on one more additional number. And so that will come before you at the December seventeenth meeting. It does, we will be able to provide a refund as have historically been done, just finalizing one number.
Thank you. We'll get this signed before we proceed. We'll get this signed before we proceed. Okay, next up, Board's consideration and signature for the renewal of the agreement for cooperative wildfire protection between the Division of Fire Prevention and Control in Delta County. Morning.
So if you can give us much background as I know on this, so, uh, Department of Fire Prevention and Control, State Fire Agency, has an agreement with all the counties and the sheriffs as fire wardens, um, on, it's basically a plan of how the funding in response to fight wildfires in the state of Colorado. So a five-year agreement, so that agreement is up for renewal at the end of twenty twenty-four, um, to start fresh next year. DFPC, um, worked with the Attorney General's Office, um, this summer to go through and make sure all the relevant legislation was current in the agreement, and that's mostly the changes that have been made since the last agreement. It was that AG's office went through and updated statutes and references and stuff. Um, there wasn't much room for us to provide input, because the state pretty much said that these are just legislation changes that need to be made. My understanding is this agreement's been sent out, and it needs to be approved by the sheriff, the B O C C, and Clerk Terry Stevenson, and it'll be E-signed. So if approved, it's just a you're authorizing the chairman's E-signed the agreement, which I believe Commissioner Lane, did you receive it in your email yet? Or do we need to have him resend it?
I think I did.
We can work on getting that organized if you have not received it. Sheriff, did you have any?
I really don't have much to add. I, I went through this, this document, and I do not see anything that really stuck out to me. The DCFP is, it's taking more of a, a leadership role in, in fighting wildfires and, and coming into the county, which is, which is a good thing. As you all know, wildfires can be very, very expensive in a hurry. They've been, they've been good to work with up to date.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, as always, this is a short document.
You did not write it.
Oh, okay.
AG's office did. You can blame them.
And we will. Well, I'm gonna move the board approve, uh, the agreement for cooperative wildfire protection between Delta County through its Board of County Commissioners and Sheriff Taylor, Sheriff of the County and State of Colorado, acting by and through the Department of Public Safety for the benefit of the Division of Fire Prevention and Control, and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
Motion and second on the floor. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, so done. Thank you. And that'll be an E-document to sign. Next up, we have the Delta County Emergency Manager, Chris Stewart. Board's consideration and discussion to establish the nine-one-one emergency telephone service surcharge for twenty twenty-five as a Delta County Emergency Telephone Service Authority.
Um, so about a month or so ago, Clerk Stevenson received a, uh, inquiry from one of our nine-one-one telecom providers, asking for the twenty twenty-five threshold for the nine-one-one surcharge. So just to refresh the board, we collect a nine-one-one surcharge to fund the E-nine-one one fund, to help fund dispatch, salaries and equipment to keep dispatch running, as does every P S A P authority, uh, Emergency Telephone Service Authority in the state. Um, that's how most, unlike, um, some other jurisdictions, that's the only fund that they have to fund their nine-one-one centers. We're gracious for the support of the Commissioners and Sheriff's Office for other funds to help keep our dispatch center going. Um, there's also state surcharges, um, wireless and prepaid wireless that they collect on behalf of the entire state, and then they remit a portion of that to Delta County. So, um, per statute, we have to set the surcharge amount for our county's surcharge, um, each year, um, so that we can publicly notice that to our, all the telecom providers, like TDS, Elevate, Verizon, anyone that provides telephone service within Delta County, they remit that surcharge to us. Uh, the current surcharge is a dollar ninety-seven per line per month, and that's collected as regulatory fees on the phone bill. It's not per call. There's no fee to call nine-one-one. This is a, on your phone bill once a month. Um, and then the state collects, um, twelve cents per line, for state surcharge, and the prepaid wireless surcharge rate is two dollars and nine cents uh, per transaction, like to renew one of those prepaid cards that you would load your phone with. Since that could last more than a month, it's, that's just a per transaction fee instead of per month. The threshold can go up to two dollars and twelve cents. If we wanted to increase it, or we can stay at it during budget discussions, there was no discussion of raising it above the dollar ninety-seven. So, um, this discussion from the Commissioners on if you want to keep it at the current dollar ninety-seven, or if you would like to pursue increasing it. If you want to increase it, we can only do so twice a year, um, February first or June first, after sixty days' notice. That sixty days' notice has lapsed for the February first date, so as soon as we could increase it, it would be June first, twenty twenty-five. Any questions?
Necessary evil, I guess, like taxes, keeping nine-one-one system going.
Anything additional, Don?
Well, it, it, so, um, Chris and I and Terry had, kind of, were talking about this, and it is, if the statute does require the board to set it e- every year. It, it doesn't go into a lot of detail. What I found is that most counties, or at least I would think that, you know, kind of a, a decent practice or a decent approach to this is, if the, if it's the board's will to leave it alone, frankly, I think you could just do a motion for twenty twenty-five, that it's gonna stay the same. If it's the board's will to raise it to whatever, um, probably need to come back with a resolution as formality, and, and that sort of itself. So, but if you're gonna leave it alone, you could, you could do a motion and just set it for twenty twenty-five. Chris can, can, um, reference the minutes in his communication with the, the providers, and, and that would be a submission.
That, with that being said, I'll move that the board, uh, maintain the existing nine-one-one emergency telephone s- service surcharge for twenty twenty-five.
At a dollar ninety-seven.
At a dollar ninety-seven.
I will second.
Motion and second on the floor. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, so done. Thank you for all your work and information. Thank you. Next up, Board's consideration and discussion of signing on to a letter request from Grand County Commissioners asking British Columbia not to provide wolves to Colorado.
I'll pick up on this one. This one came through our, uh, Club Twenty group, uh, the state of Colorado, because they have not found a suitable source for wolves in the continental U.S., have gone to British Columbia. This program of wolf reintroduction has been, of course, widely publicized, but also widely disparaged because of its, um, problems that this thing has had. We've had a request from Grand County and Club Twenty to sign on to a letter asking British Columbia to, um, decline to participate in this. It'd be my recommendation to this board that we, uh, agree to that and sign off on a letter to B C, uh, asking them not to participate.
I'm, I'm good with that. I think, uh, we, uh, we've made our point very clear that this, this whole, this whole debacle should be put on hold. They've fulfilled the obligation set forth by the voters and, uh, trying to figure out how to fix the problem they've already got versus creating more problems, so.
Agreed, yep. When the letter comes, we'll sign it. Thank you.
Do we need a motion on that?
I would.
Yes. I'll move the board, uh, approve the si- signature to a letter, uh, request from Grand County Commissioners, uh, requesting British Columbia, Canada not to provide wolves to Colorado.
Second.
Motion and second on the floor. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, so done. Thank you. Thank you. Next up is Lindsey Mitchell with her review of our B O C C schedule, but first I would like to acknowledge Lindsey Mitchell. She put together a basket that was auctioned off at the Colorado Counties Incorporated convention at the C C I, and it was the highest, um, priced basket in the banquet, I guess that night you call it, and, uh, Don described the contents in it very well, and it brought a thousand dollars, and all the, uh, basket money went to support the four-H. So, good job, Lindsey.
Oh, thank you so much. Karen, thanks, Don, for describing the items, because they were all, uh, local items from community numbers, and so I am so proud of our community and what they do for, um, a living and, and what they create, so. Um, we have on their, their commissioners, December this afternoon, a boardable housing presentation at one to two-thirty. Um, we also have the next Board of County Commissioners' regular scheduled meeting as December seventeenth, eight-thirty, twelve. Um, we have on December seventeenth, the U V W U V A Task Force Meeting, number eight. That's twelve PM to three PM.
Commissioners, I'm gonna be attending that one. This one should be the last one, but that does c- conflict with Roden Bridge.
Then December seventeen, um, one to three forty, Roden Bridge. December seventeen, three-thirty to four-thirty, Board of Health. And then December twenty-fourth, the administrative offices will be closed early, and, but includes the North Port Annex, the landfill, and the courthouse complex here in Delta. We'll be closing at twelve PM. And then December twenty-fifth, that will be, um, Christmas, the county offices, and, but, all day. And that includes December.
On, on the twenty-fourth Christmas Eve, you said we're gonna work all day. Is that what?
Yes. News to the employees.
Oh, we're shutting down at noon. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Then what holidays following that? The twenty-fifth's a holiday. January one's a holiday, okay? Then the first regularly scheduled B O C C is January seventh.
Correct.
And swearing in?
At eight AM.
On the Saturday.
I thought it was.
Okay.
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
We need to check. I, I think it's second Tuesday.
Okay.
Statute.
Okay, we'll check that.
Okay, thank you. I'll read the, uh, jail report.
If we'd get it done sooner.
Yeah. For Monday, November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, Delta County Detention Facility Population Count Report, male inmates counted jail thirty, female inmates counted jail five, male inmates Department of Corrections five, female inmates Department of Corrections three, for a total of forty-three. Average daily inmate population for the week of eleven eighteen twenty-four through eleven twenty-five twenty-four was fifty-one point sixty-nine. For Monday, December second, Delta County Detention Facility Population Count Report, male inmates counted jail thirty, female inmates counted jail six, male inmates Department of Corrections three, female inmates Department of Corrections two, for a total of forty-one. Average daily inmate population for the week of eleven twenty-five twenty-four through twelve-two twenty-four was forty-nine point seven-five. Next up, we have County Attorney John Bear. Oh, okay.
Good morning, Ms. Hannigan.
Good morning.
So, good morning, uh, Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. One item that I have on the board's, uh, agenda this morning, and that's under an executive session. Matters required to be kept confidential by state law or rules or regulations pursuant to our revised statute twenty-four to six-four, three, four, seven, six. The authorizing law that, and regulations that authorizes the confidentiality is our revised statute, section twenty-six, one, one thirty-nine, sub-five, uh, as well as, uh, regulations under, uh, volume seven. The topic for discussion is regarding confidential case-specific review report regarding egregious incidents of abuse and or neglect, near fatalities, or child fatalities. So I would recommend that the board go into executive session to discuss this topic. I'll ask everyone to, um, restrain their, um, conversation only to this topic. Uh, this is not under advice of counsel, so, Terry, the recording, it will be a closed session, uh, but the recording would stay active and recorded. John, do I need to, you'll need to go, and, and Lindsey could probably be working as well.
I'll move the board go into executive session pursuant to the C R S code Attorney Bear, uh, provided for us. And stay on topic with this. In that executive session, we engage Terry Stevenson, the three Commissioners, Robbie LaValle, and Attorney Bear.
Second.
Motion and second on the floor. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
And yes, and we'll adjourn following the executive session?
Yes.
Okay, say aye. Everybody's mic is on or off?
She got recorded.
It had to be on.
Are we gonna play them on? Low sound.
These will be on. You can shut that.
Yeah, go ahead and kill that.